Good afternoon. Welcome to the Westminster City Council Candidate Debate sponsored by the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. My name is David Carpenter. I am the moderator of tonight's debate. I'm a Senior Project Manager with Colliers Engineering and Design and a founding member of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, well as the Secretary of the Board of Directors of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a Westminster resident and live in countryside. In full disclosure, the Chamber does not endorse candidates or contribute to campaigns. All candidates are invited to this in-person session today. The city is allowing us to use their city council chambers, however, there is no involvement outside of this use and the recording of tonight's program. And Abby pushing the button on the timer for us, keeping track. All right, so the way tonight's going to work, we're going to have each candidate share an opening statement of 60 seconds or less. We are going to work our way clockwise. So, clockwise, so Counselor Baker will start with the introductions and we will move our way through. Then we will start having rapid-fire questions of 30-second, with 30-second answers each. We will, for this first question, we will start with Claire and work our way clockwise, and Counselor Baker will be last and keep rotating through as we go through the forum. None of the questions have been presented to the candidates ahead of time. If time allows, we may open it up for one or two questions from the audience, but with our time constraints, I don't know how likely that will be. You're encouraged to find the stream on the Westminster City YouTube channel and comment there if you have any questions for the candidates, or of course, you can, for those who are here in person, can speak with them after the debate. So, in the spirit of civility, I do request the audience refrain from applauding, shouting out, audibly groaning, or sighing, et cetera, during the debate, so we can ask as many questions as possible. Non-audible eye-rolling is acceptable, however, so I want to see plenty of that. So the two exceptions to the no applauding rule are here at the beginning and the end of the program, so please welcome our candidates with a round of applause now. Thank you. All right, let's get started with a 60-second or less opening statement from each of the candidates. Counselor Baker, please start us off.
Thank you, and thanks, everyone, for coming. I'm a known quantity, Bruce Baker, been on the council a couple times. The way I see it, we are on the edge of the destiny of Westminster. Are we going to remain a suburb, a green place with trees, an oasis? Because we are an oasis, in the middle of the Colorado High Desert. But very prudent people, generations before, gave us a legacy that we can have as an oasis, or we can have as a crowded, future urban center of the Front Range. I want an oasis, where there is no difference between the affluent parts of our city and the less affluent parts of our city. And if we take on $150 million of debt for a water plant we don't need, we will never have reasonable water rates again. Thank you.
Great. Claire?
I will introduce myself. My name is Claire Carmelia, and I am an Information Technology Project Manager by day. It is my job to collaborate with stakeholders and bring them together to find common ground and ensure that solutions are met and delivered on time, within scope, and within budget. And it is my intention to use this experience to bring and build collaboration here on council, within the city, and build bridges between us. My background is in environmental studies, and I intend to use this experience concerning issues regarding air, clean, affordable water, and protecting our parks and open spaces, and in all natural resources. My experience volunteering is with the Action Center. I frequently do clothing and food drives and back-to-school supply drives with the Action Center because I care deeply for the community and understand that often there are gaps that we are not meeting. And I am a former foster adopt child, which means-
Time. All right, Amber?
Hi, I'm Amber Hot, and I'm running because I deeply care about this community. I feel that I understand a lot of what our community is going through. When I was 15 years old, I found out that I was pregnant at a time that my mom was feeding me and my sister with food stamps and food from the local food bank. And since I, the age of 16, the only family I had in Colorado was my infant son. So it was me, me and my son. And we survived by our community and social safety nets. I went on to get my associate's degree at Red Rocks Community College with a low-income grant, and then I went on to study mental health at Regis University. And by occupation, I am a legislative aide, which means that I understand the stakeholder process. It means that I understand policy and bringing, and I understand the people that we need to bring to the table when we are talking about policy and making decisions for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Christine?
Hello, I'm Christine Ireland. I've lived in Westminster for 37 years. I moved here right out of college with my husband. I have a degree from Brigham Young University in retail management. I worked in retail before I had my five lovely children, who are all living on their own and all college-educated, and I'm proud to say that they're self-sufficient, and that's what I believe in, self-sufficiency, and I believe our city is living way beyond our means. I'm against the water treatment plan as it stands. I'm against the new courthouse as it stands. It's too expensive, and it's going to cost the citizens way too much money. I feel like our city is becoming just tax and spend and don't care about the citizens and listening to their point of view on projects. I think there's too much high-density in the Uplands projects, there's too much density. I am just appalled at what has happened and transpired in the last two years, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Jeff?
Hi, I'm Jeff Jones. I'm a 30, over 30 years I've lived here with my wife. I am also a former city employee. I worked 40 years for the city. I retired last year. 35 of that as a police officer, and I rose to the ranks of commander. I did retire last year. I have a good knowledge of this city. I believe in this city, I deeply care about it, and I want to continue that. I believe in responsible, sustainable, and accountable government. I also believe that the city is moving forward. We've done some good things, and I've seen struggles, and I've seen positives within the city, and I just want to be part of that. My wife was a 38-year city employee, 21 with the city police department, and 17 here at City Hall, and that's who we are. We're public servants, and I would like to continue that as a city councilman. Thank you.
Time. Thank you. Karen?
Hello, my name is Karen Calaviti. I've lived in Westminster for 13 years, and for much of that time, I had no desire to be on city council because I just thought the city was a well-run city, and lots of open space, beautiful, beautiful spaces. It made Westminster special. And in the last few years, I've seen that specialness be disrupted terribly with some of the policies. And I'm calling myself a Green Gremlin because I'm talking about some mischief for a green planet. I really think we need to protect our open spaces, not crowd them in with high-density housing, use a 30-by-30 strategy which would protect open areas and wildlife habitat for the future, for climate change resiliency. We can have housing, but we need to be strategic where it's placed and how it's designed.
Time. Thank you. Paul?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Paul Page, and I'm running for city council, as you can tell. I'm fortunate to have grown up in Colorado. I love Colorado. For the last 23 years, I've lived here in Westminster with my beautiful wife, Margaret. We own and operate Mad Rabbit Distillery here in Westminster, so I understand the business aspects of being on the other side of what the councilors and the city does here for the community. If I am elected to city council, I'll collaborate with my peers so that we can encourage builders to stop building the high-density apartments and start focusing more on affordable houses. What that means is homes that people can buy, build equity in, and have a share in the community, and have something that they can give on to their families, not just apartments or the paying rent. If I'm going to do crafting public policy, it'll be with compassion, and I'll also have a commitment to work with the city to make sure that our water infrastructure is complete and mindful of our residents' bills.
Time. Perfect. Thank you. Tim?
Hi, I'm Tim Peg, and I'm running for Westminster City Council. I'm running to help ensure that Westminster is welcoming to individuals and families at all stages of life. Previously, I served on the Board of Directors of a nonprofit makerspace in Boulder. The organization was facing some challenges, particularly making rent, when I joined the board, and we had to balance our members' desire for new capabilities against our need to maintain our existing machines. We were ultimately able to find creative business solutions that welcomed new members and, well, helped the organization adapt to change. I work as an engineer. That means I take some time to understand my clients' goals. Then I help them understand all the trade-offs in the design process, and finally, we work our way to a solution which balances short-term needs, long-term needs, and practical constraints. I am optimistic that we can invest in community safety, preserve our parks and open space, and run Westminster sustainably, responsibly, and make it an even better place to live. Thanks.
Thank you. Rich?
Thank you. Thank you to the chamber for having us tonight. I'm Rich Seymour. My website is richthewesty.org. I encourage you to go there, look at the endorsements that I've received. And my background, I've been embedded deeply in our community since 2001. I grew up a Colorado native as well. We chose Westminster as the place to raise our three kids, and now we have the opportunity to share that with our four grandkids. Since 2001, I've been giving to our community. I'm a founding member of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, and I've served on numerous boards, helped with youth sports, our high school and continuing education and CTE programs. And four years ago, I was honored to be elected to city council. In these last four years, especially the last two years, we have made significant changes in the direction of our city by hiring a new city manager and updating our capital improvements budget. I look forward to another four years to make this city even greater. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
My name is Scott Schilling, and I'm also running. Now, I have a, my family has a huge, long history in Colorado. My great-grandfather brought in some of the original registered herpers into the state back in the late 1800s, early 1900s. So I have a long history in Colorado itself. I'm certainly concerned about Colorado, and I'm concerned about how we're growing and the ramifications of all this as it applies to the city. So what I'm bringing out here is a forward-thinking, okay? Where are we going to be in five years, 10 years? What are the financial impacts that are going to be for the residents at the time? I also want to concern myself with the immediate needs, homeless needs, okay? Low-income housing needs, complex issues, to say the least. So that's what I'm going to bring to the table, forward thinking, and now.
Time. Great. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the rapid-fire questions. We have 30-second answers. Some of these questions are complex, so we'll do your best to have the answer in 30 seconds or less. So we will start with you, Claire. What is the proper role of Westminster municipal government and why?
The proper role of government is to be a steward to the city, which means listening to residents, listening to the organizations within the city, and doing polling of residents before projects, and ensuring that we meet the needs and fulfill the gaps of the residents within the city.
Great. Thank you. Amber?
Yes, I agree that it is talking to people in the community, it's talking to stakeholders, talking to experts, making sure that we are making responsible decisions, and making sure that we're taking care of our residents.
Great. Thank you. Christine?
I think it's responsibilities to be a steward of the people's money, their safety, their lives, make their lives as happy as possible by staying out of their way, and I think that applies to taxes, water rates, everything that costs people money. And I don't think our city right now is being family-friendly, and that is a concern to me.
Thank you. Jeff?
I believe that the role of municipal government is, first of all, to provide those services that we pay our taxes for, core services, police, fire, affordable drinking water, roads, libraries, beautiful open spaces, parks. It is also to listen. We have to have open minds, we have to listen, and we have to, in our hearts, believe that we're making good decisions. That's what I feel that role is. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen?
Yeah, the city council members are supposed to be looking out for the best interest of the city, its environment, and its residents. And what I'm seeing happening right now is the city is looking out for the best interest of developers, consultants, and bond investors, and it makes me very angry.
Thank you. Paul?
So, it's going to be hard to follow Jeff on this one because he nailed it. Core services is really the bottom line for what municipal government is all about. It's providing those core services to the residents, but it really starts here on city council, because city council is the one that crafts policy and also creates laws which are enforced by the city government in one of those jurisdictions, which Jeff knows very well. So, that's it in a nutshell. Provide core services.
Thanks, Paul. Tim?
I think the role of the city government is to help ensure that everybody can exercise their rights, first through community safety and making sure that everyone feels safe in their community. Yes, there is a role for government to provide recreational opportunities as well, or, you know, outside of the fundamentals, like parks and open space. And I think there is even a role for government to directly help people where that is financially responsible.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
Thank you. The proper role of government at all levels is to protect the rights of the individual. If you protect the rights of the individual, you protect the right of the whole. One of those protections is protection of property rights. A municipality has to protect the right of willing sellers of property to sell to willing buyers. Then, we have to make sure, in the morning, when you get up, you get good, clean water. When you flush, it goes downhill, and that your roads, streets, and gutters work properly as well.
Time. Yes. Thank you. Scott?
It's interesting, sitting over here on the far-left side over here, because every point that I wanted to make has been made. Municipal government is clearly out there to provide, you know, the services, the core services that we need. At the same time, we can't bit too big, you know? We need to keep, government needs to be sized right, sized correctly for the environment. Right now, five years ago, one city employee for every 125 people.
Time. Bruce?
Okay. I should know how to do this. So maintain all that, but there's one other thing, fairness. We need to fairly enforce our rules, and we're not doing that, and I used all my time.
Appreciate that. All right, well, with the discussion of core services here, next question, we'll start with Amber, and what do you see as Westminster's core services?
Police, fire, water. We also have issue, or we also have areas that have food deserts. We also have, and we have homeless, unhoused neighbors that we need to provide services to, and partnering with other government officials, so that way we can do the most for the residents.
Thank you. Christine?
Well, I think it's police, fire, water, open spaces, maintaining things. I don't think parts of our city, the people can maintain things because the water rates are too high. I believe that we should be better stewards of the people's money, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Christine. Jeff?
Well, I already mentioned that in the first answer, but police, fire, affordable and reasonable water, and I look at water even as a public safety issue. Water is a public safety issue. We have to have good, safe, clean water, whether it is to build a new water treatment plant to make that safe and reliable. Parks, open spaces, roads, parks and libraries, infrastructure needs, that's core services.
Thank you, Jeff. Karen?
Yeah, I think it's been covered, but police, parks, recreation, the libraries, roads, caring, maintaining our public buildings and our public infrastructure, and that includes updating infrastructure where it's needed, rather than just saying it should be demolished and a whole new structure, for instance, with a water treatment, or even with the municipal court building.
Time. Paul?
Sure is great being at this end, but it is true, the five core services, which are going to be public safety, which is fire and police, which is important, obviously, water and sewer, equally important. We got to have clean water, and we got to have working sewers. We have roads, which not a lot of people have touched on. Our roads are terrible, 52% tile, but getting better. Of course, the back office administrative, nobody's talked about, and the parks. So all of our good at core services.
Great. Time. I'm sorry, Tim?
Our core services are definitely police, fire, our water utility, roads, parks, and open space, and of course, our libraries. How we want to balance those budgets, I think, you know, we need to make sure that we are having an open and transparent discussion about that.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
It is tough on this end. Our city is a full-service city that delivers all the things that everyone at the diocese has mentioned. Those services take people, and we can't do it without people. We found out during the pandemic, when we were short a couple hundred people, our email boxes were full every day about the things that weren't getting done. Municipal government is here to get things done, and we need people to do that.
Thank you, Rich. Scott?
You know, for core services, I would kind of like, you know, we got a handful that are all at the very top, police, fire, et cetera. So then you think, okay, how do you rank them? Which ranks first? Is it infrastructure? I kind of think infrastructure ranks right up there as a top core service, followed very closely by police and fire, okay? Then followed then by maybe parks and recreation, open spaces. So what do we really need the most?
Time. Perfect. Thank you. Bruce?
And I got it right this time. And also fairness. That's one of the core functions of government, is to make things fair, because life is unfair. Big people beat up little people, rich people push around not as rich people. Government smokes to make life fair, and that's why we have laws, and that's why we should fairly and equally enforce them, not give special benefits to our friends.
Thank you, Bruce. And Claire?
Core services is streets, it is stop signs, it is speed bumps, from which I've heard from residents, we need a few more of. It is, of course, as we've mentioned, police and fire. It means supporting police and fire to ensure they have the resources and the staff that they need, and being a good partner to them, and it is supporting our city staff and ensuring that they have the resources that they need to get their jobs done.
Thank you, Claire. All right, on to the next question. So, as was mentioned, Westminster is a full-service city, so it's kind of difficult to compare apples to apples with other cities. Rada is a city, but it doesn't have a fire department. Denver's a full-service city, but it's also a county. Broomfield's a county, but it doesn't have a fire service, it has a fire district that it's part of. So anyhow, water rates are really a hot topic right now. Denver has a lower rate per 1,000 gallons in Tier 1, but also charges a monthly tap fee. Westminster only charges for the water used. And with, while Westminster water rates are lowered significantly by the current council, their proposed 4.5% increase still has water costs lower than a couple years ago, and Denver's increase was 5.7% this year. So, with all those facts, and probably a lot more, where should Westminster water rates be? Do you believe they're appropriate? Do you believe that they're too high, or do you believe they're too low? And we will start that question with Christine.
Well, I definitely can answer this one. I think they're way too high. I've walked neighborhood after neighborhood. There might be two yards in the entire street that have green grass. This cannot, people are hurting. This is not, these rates are too high. And I'll tell you why Denver's has gone up, because they bought, built a new water treatment plant, and it's $600 million. Well, ours is only the first phase, $200 million, and so this is not something we can afford, because there's a million and a half people in Denver. There's only 118,000 people in our city.
Well, I think one of the things that we need to understand is we're comparing to other cities, but how do those cities process the water? Do they have a water treatment plant that needs to be replaced? That will up the cost of our water rates. Our water rates went down in the last couple of years, rather than up tremendously. So I believe that we have reasonable water rates now. We're trying hard to lower those water rates even more year by year. But we can't really compare city to city unless we know how they process it, what their plants are like.
Time.
That's what we need to compare.
Great. Karen?
Yeah, this 4.5% increase, that's per year, for the next 10 years, and we don't know what's going to happen after the 10-year. So, I mean, this is all in anticipation of this very expensive water treatment plant, which requires the taking of land. Rich Seymour was talking about willing sellers. Well, that water treatment plant was not a willing seller, and the whole thing is very expensive and environmentally bereft.
All right. Okay, Paul, and before you start, Paul, just a reminder to get closer to the microphone just in case, it seems like you keep leaning farther back, so. Yeah. Perfect. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
So this is a hot topic, and it's definitely a crux of my campaign. I believe that we need to have a commitment to both the city to maintain the water infrastructure up to the levels that it needs, while being mindful with residents and their monthly budgets. We have a yard, we pay our bill every month, we know it's expensive. However, we're kind of paying it back or paying it forward for the people that don't want us to be Flint, Michigan, to let us get to this position.
Thank you. Tim?
The February 2022 city council meeting in which water rates were lowered showed that the new lower water rates were likely to be financially challenging for the water utility. Now, the fact of the matter is that raising them is probably not practical at this point in time, so I think we need to keep an eye on the water utilities' budget and make sure that we're being smart.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
We lowered the water rates in one tier by 50%. We lowered the water rates in another tier by 36%. And then we built the new water treatment plant, or building that. How many of you have 50-year-old technology that you rely on every day, and that you are there to provide a service to other people that has to be guaranteed no matter what? That's what we're looking at. 50-year-old technology has seen its time. It works for now.
Thank you, Rich. Scott?
The water rates are high, and potentially could go much higher. Now, I was spending some time with the budget, looking at this thing, and I want to make absolutely sure that these water rates are not funding other initiatives. The water rates should be for water only, only. And so, once I'm in there, I'm going to look at the financials to make sure that that's the case.
Thank you. Counselor Baker?
I mean, the water rates are too high. If you compare us to Pueblo, or Broomfield, or Fort Collins, their really highest rate is less than $4. Denver itself is only $4.47. We have high water rates because we want to recklessly spend on a plant we don't need. We have high water rates because we want to recklessly spend on a plant we don't need.
Thank you, Bruce. Claire?
Water is a public safety issue, period. And I believe I'm one of the only people in this room who has a background in studying municipal water plants. That said, other cities, such as Arvada, have passed the making of a new water plant with no big upheaval. And so I would like to take a look at how those loans were managed, what did we agree to. I also want to say I appreciate the efforts this council has made to lower those water rates, and I'd like to take a look at the tiers between residents and businesses.
Thank you, Claire. Amber?
I agree that we do need to do our best to not raise water rates even more. Water is a public safety issue. Right now, we have no ability to filter ash if there's a fire around Stanley Lake, or even around Coal Creek that feeds into Stanley Lake. That means that if that were to happen, our city would have no water. And so that's one of the things that they are proposing in the new.
Time. Thank you. All right, on to the next question. So, so, next question, we'll start with Jeff. So, "The Declaration of Independence notes that all people have the right to life, liberty, and happiness, and implicit in that is a respect for real property rights. So, should people be able to be free to do what they want, and specifically be able to build what they want on their own land? If not, why not? And if so, what limitations to that right are there?"
Well, first of all, I believe that city council does not have the right to tell somebody who they can sell their land to. So they don't have a right to say that you have to sell your land to this person, just like they don't have a right to tell me who I have to sell my house to. They do have a right to sell their land, but we have guidelines and zoning requirements on how that land can be developed. Those are already established, and we can work with those developers and those landowners and how to get that process completed.
Time. Thank you. Karen?
Yeah, I'm harkening back to the issue of the water treatment plant, which was brought, that land, about 200 acres, was forced to be sold by the owner who did not want to sell it for the water treatment plant. Eminent domain was used on that, and I think that was totally, totally wrong. That's an example of what the city did against what it says it was going to do.
Thank you, Karen. Paul?
So I agree that people should have the rights to sell property that they own to somebody that's willing to purchase it for prices fair and equitable for both parties. I agree also that there's zoning laws that have been put into place that work for the benefit of the city and its residents, and those should be respected. So so long as it could be a cooperation for the person that's buying the land, if they want to develop it, that they can work within those zoning guidelines, then I would be all for that.
Thank you, Paul. Tim?
Yes, I largely believe that people should be able to sell their land in particular to whoever they want, and largely to use it how they want. There should be some reasonable limitations on that to respect the safety and health of the neighbors, for example. But largely, I think the city should be hands-off on that.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
People live in a city, they choose to live in a city because they like order. And one thing that planning does is it provides order to people. If you live in an HOA, you move there because you like that type of order. But we have order here in our city because we have limited resources, number one being water. And so our new comprehensive plan was developed around water, and we have to be able to control how the land is used so we make sure we have enough of that limited resource.
Thank you, Rich. Scott?
You know, when you're talking about doing what you want with your land, okay, great. I think you should. Should do whatever you want. But at the same time, living within the guidelines of what you signed up for. So if you bought yourself a house in a community with an HOA, you're knowing full well that you've signed up to an HOA. Again, you know, as going forward, zoning of the city, if you're going to come into the city, you need to understand that the city has rules. And if you don't want to buy there, go someplace else.
What has been said before is when we live in a city, we sign the social contract, and we give up some of our rights. Willingly and by free choice, give up some of our rights. And that's where zoning comes in, and planning comes in, and all these other things come in. So we don't have unlimited rights. And by the way, it's the pursuit of happiness. No one's guaranteed happiness. And so I'm more than willing to make that contract. I give up some of my rights for order.
Thank you, Bruce. Claire?
Well, Baker stole my thunder there. I was going to say the same. Yes, living within a city means that we all have signed a social contract here, and I do believe that we have the right to do what we will with our land to a certain extent, such as build ADUs if that seems appropriate, or to have maybe an RV nearby, depending on the situation within that community. However, we have a social contract. We need to respect our neighbors, our HOAs, and the community.
Thank you, Claire. Amber?
Yeah, I do think that people should have the right to do what they want with their land with, you know, reasonable expectations, of course. We need to make sure that we are taking care, whatever we're doing, we need to make sure that it's environmentally friendly. We need to make sure that we are not doing anything that the neighbors aren't going to appreciate. So we need to take our neighbors into account, and.
Yep, time. Thank you. And Christine?
I believe in that the citizens have the right to sell their land, but the city has a right to follow the charter. There's been places in our city that were zoned not high density that have been changed to high density. There are places that are taller than our charter says. I know that the Uplands is now a metropolitan district. This was not in our charter. I believe in following the charter, and that's something that our city council has not been doing lately.
All right. Thank you, Christine. All right, next question. This will start with Karen. Is Westminster a business-friendly city? Why or why not?
It seems to be a business-friendly city for corporations. I frequent the old downtown and see the problems they have because it doesn't seem to be a friendly city for small business owners. It's more for corporations. In the old downtown, a lot of old downtowns are thriving, but we do not really make it available for our people in downtown.
Paul?
Well, I definitely have a different opinion on that since I am a small business owner. Westminster is very friendly to small business. It's a wonderful place to have a business. Patrons are very accommodating and enthusiastic to go to small businesses. Yet it's also friendly to large corporations. I think Ball is probably our largest employer. It's a gigantic corporation, and frankly, it's one of our best customers. So we get it from residents and corporations for small businesses to benefit from.
Thank you. Tim?
Speaking with a couple residents who are small business owners, I'm under the impression that they have an easy time with the permitting process in the city. So yeah, I would say, based on that, city is friendly to business. That being said, I think we can keep an eye on things and make sure that we continue to ensure that our permitting processes for business are efficient.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
I believe we are even more friendly than we were a few years ago. One of the linchpins when I was elected was to open City Hall up five days a week. As a small business owner, I always came tearing over here on Friday and thought, awesome, I got a great parking spot. Well, the building was closed. So we moved forward with that. Staff did a great job of balancing that out. The new tax system and the new online licensing system is a breeze, and I think we can always improve, but we're in a good spot right now.
Thank you, Rich. Scott?
You know, first and foremost, Westminster is a suburb. Houses, trees, places to sleep. Second of all, it's also a city, okay, where we need to manage and control our small businesses and a few large ones. So as long as we keep a balance there, make it very friendly for businesses, but at the same time, we don't want to overgrow our businesses. We don't want a Ford factory in the middle of Westminster, for example.
Thank you. Bruce?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Oh, great. That short, sweet, to the point. Thank you. Claire?
All right. Well, seeing the number of businesses that have opened over the last two years, I can say that yes, it seems that we are friendly to businesses. However, also regarding the news that we just got yesterday, in regards to the tattered cover, which that is a larger issue on their side, but I think we can do better. And I've also heard from several owners around the city that we could make the permitting process easier and more efficient, and I would like to take a look at that to ensure that we're incentivizing and encouraging them to move here.
Thank you, Claire. Amber?
I do think we are business-friendly, but I also think that there's room for improvement. It's really important that we support our businesses, as 70% of our tax come from our retail businesses. So it's important that we make it easy for small business owners and our retail business owners, because that's where we get the most of our revenue from. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Christine?
Maybe overall, we are good to small business, but I know in the new town town, we are not. The parking situation down there, everyone I talked to who's ever been down there does not know where to park, does not know how to park, they will never go back. I think the parking should be free down there, at least when the businesses are open. And so in that area of the town, I don't think we are really that great with small business.
Thank you, Christine. Jeff?
Yes, I believe the city is very friendly to small business and corporations. I've been an employee 40 years here. I've attended, been to a lot of businesses. I do believe that they have a great staff in this city that helps small businesses, both to develop and both while they're open. I think there is always room for improvement, but I do think that we are very friendly here.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. On to the next question. This will be starting with Paul. So, "The historic heart of Westminster occurs to many as a neglected area of the city. It's where the city was founded, yet the residents and business owners deal with more crime, more homelessness issues, have narrower walks, have fewer park spaces due to the guidelines or lack thereof when it was developed back in the day. The city has made many top-down studies of the area, most of which have been gathering dust on shelves ever since. So what can the city do to work with the residents collaboratively in historic Westminster?"
I think, excuse me, I think that as a city council, we would actually have to invite them in and ask them what's important to them. I do agree, as walking through the campaign, there are affluent parts of Westminster, and there are definitely some poorer parts of Westminster that are being neglected. I think it'd be important to reach out to the residents, ask them what's important to them, and see if we could budget something in to spruce up the neighborhoods to make them more welcoming for themselves as residents.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
Sure. One thing the city can do directly is to address the fact that the city owns several properties that are sitting vacant or have a building on them but are sitting empty, and we need to find uses for those sites so that there's traffic there. Traffic brings a business to, say, for example, the coffee shop down there. And more traffic would also help with the homeless situation as well.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
Absolutely right. There's a lot of studies sitting there, and we don't need any more studies. The residents know what they need. The differential between Old Town Arvada and historic Westminster, unfortunately, is liquor. That's what drives Old Town Arvada. Westminster started out as dry, and it's remained that way. The proposal to repurpose the rodeo market as the Westminster Old Town Brewery, I think, would have been a great success. We could work out the parking. We need to preserve that history and grow on it, rather than tear it down.
Thank you, Rich. Scott?
Having been down there and talking with the people around there, I got an earful, primarily for crime. So I think phase one is to attack the crime that's down there, aggressively manage our laws, and drive out crime. After that, then we start looking at the, you know, the old buildings and things of that nature. And sometimes it makes, takes a hard decision. You know, it's like, hmm, you know, is this worth this much money to do this?
Time. Bruce?
Follow-through. We need to follow-through on the plans we made. Aren't there empty planters on 72nd that haven't been watered? No, we haven't followed-through on any of the plans we've done for the original part of Westminster.
Thank you, Bruce. Claire?
I think Tim is absolutely right, that we have several vacant lots there that we should fill. It would benefit everyone economically, and it would likely drive out some of the homeless situation there as well. I also think we should do polling from the residents to find out what it is they would like to see, and make sure that we're listening to them. And I also think there's going to need to be some tough compromise, because many in historic Westminster would like to preserve the aesthetic. And while that is a priority, we're going to need to do it affordably.
Thank you, Claire. Amber?
Yes, I think it's speaking to the residents, making sure that we're listening to the residents. They are being neglected. When we brought the rail line to South Westminster, they cut the neighborhood bus lines, and that's the area of town that most of our residents don't have cars, which means it's harder for people to get to work, get around, get their groceries. And so, yes, we absolutely need to be talking to the residents, listening to them, and finding out where we can help.
Thank you, Amber. Christine?
Talking to residents in that area, I have many friends down there. They're concerned about the homelessness. There needs to be consequences for homelessness. Behavior is not changed without consequences. Also, they say there's survey after survey in our city of what they want. They've told the city what they want. The city, like Bruce says, doesn't do what they want.
Thank you, Christine. Jeff?
Yes, I think a big part of this job is listening. We have to listen, 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 and have an open mind. I do not believe they need another study. They kind of know what they want. I believe that the properties that the city owns, we do need to look for a logical, sustainable, a reasonable solution to that, and they need to have input into that.
Thank you, Jeff. Karen?
Yeah. One of the first things I would like to see is that construction fencing going out. That's been sitting there for years, where they took out old buildings, and it blights it itself. The area has been designated as blighted by the city, and that's purposeful so that they can have big corporations get land for cheap, rather than accommodating the local businesses. We need to accommodate the local businesses.
Time. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Now, I'll go to the next question, and we'll start with Tim. So we're going to switch to the new downtown. "While none of you were on council when the decision was made to eminent domain the land from the old mall, at this point, we've already broken the egg, so we may as well make an omelet out of it. We're seeing some new businesses move in, and we're also seeing some closures of new businesses, such as the tattered cover closure mentioned earlier. So, is the new downtown successful? Or, and define what that success would look like if it were successful, assuming one way or the other."
If I want to be cut and dry about it, I think success looks like recouping more in taxes from the new downtown than we're spending on debt from the investment we made in infrastructure down there. The solution to that is to make sure that it develops into a walkable, fun place to live and do business.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
Prior to being elected, I was all over the new downtown, because we hadn't built a new thing down there, signed a contract in three years. Since that date, it is becoming an overwhelming success. There's a misnomer out there that keeps getting repeated. We put $100 million into that, and we'll never get that out. I'm sorry. That's an untruth. In 2033, we will break even and then move ahead with that. If you're down there at the right time, you can't get a seat at any of the restaurants, and the parking is free for four hours. There's big signs that say that.
Time. All right. Thank you, Rich. Scott?
My wife and I went down there several times to try to figure out what it was all about. You know, so we were driving around, I was trying to take pictures and really understand what was going on. And I got the sense of, hey, what's with the high-density, you know, apartments here? And I got the sense of, hey, what's with the high-density apartments here? All of the businesses were underneath the apartments. There was no place to walk around, and the parking was confusing. So I would like to get that straightened out till it becomes, you know, applied for the city.
Thank you. Bruce?
Well, the downtown is a failure. We should get rid of the architects who have been pushing this for 10 years on the city. They're wrong. The only way that we'll get the $100 million back is if these fantasy projections come to life, and with COVID changing office space and work habits, that's probably not going to happen. So let's be real.
Thank you, Bruce. Claire?
I think success looks like more usable space for residents than dirt, and I think that we're almost there. I see a lot of potential in that area, and I think the city has worked very hard to make it a success. And I moved directly across from that area three years ago because of that, and every six months or so, I see a new business open up. So we need to expand on that potential.
Great. Thank you, Claire. Amber?
I think the new downtown is really important. That used to be the Westminster Mall, and that's where we got a lot of our revenue from. I used to go to the Westminster Mall as a kid, and we know that it was dying, and so it's important that we have businesses that can thrive there. As Rich mentioned, we will be breaking even on 2033, which means every year after that, we'll be getting millions of revenue, and they're projecting about five years after to be, to collect about, sorry, I ran out of time.
Thank you. Sorry, I got distracted. It was my fault. I wasn't watching the time. I apologize. Christine?
I agree with Bruce. It's an absolute disaster. The architecture is horrible. I saw better things in Moscow and China. The only way to improve the area, I don't even know, but an In-N-Out Burger would help, maybe a Chick-fil-A. Those two things are making a lot of money for Thornton.
Thank you, Christine. Jeff?
How about we move forward instead of looking at the past? It's there. Let's move forward. Let's try to develop it. Let's work with developers to do that. There is a plan. As I've said, we are going to break even. Let's be positive about this. Yes, I've been here a long time. I wasn't happy the way that mall was going to be developed years ago. I lived close by to the mall, but we can move forward, and that mall will be developed, and we will make money on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Karen?
Yeah, I'm actually a proponent of the new downtown. It did take an existing place that was losing money. It was no longer in fashion, the Westminster Mall. I used to shop there too, but it was out of date. And so it has infrastructure in place. It has roads. It has water. It has sewer. It has all the things that new development should have, and I'd rather see new development there than like at the uplands.
Thank you, Karen. Paul?
I got to start by saying I miss the Trail Dust. I ate more steak there in my youth than I can count, but I digress. I like new things. I like what's happening over there. I see it as a long-term, good plan for the city itself. I do find some of the parking for the shops, the way that they've been laid out below the apartments, is cumbersome. Hopefully, on the other half of the development, it'll be a little more accessible for people to get in and out of businesses.
Thank you, Paul. All right, next question, and this is going to start with Rich. So now to everyone's favorite subject, traffic. We have street racing. We have red light running and downright reckless driving, alternating with completely clogged streets where you can't move at all at other times. What is the plan to deal with the traffic?
We are all, unfortunately, living in the post-COVID world, where people lost their ever love and mind and decided it was okay to break the rules, because they were not being held accountable to it. So we hope that that eventually wears out, but current council puts some teeth into street racing, exhibition of speed, car thefts, and so that we can give our police officers a way to put teeth in that and move those offenses into our municipal court so we can deal with them locally.
Thank you, Rich. Scott?
I kind of agree with Rich on this. Again, I want to aggressively enforce the laws that we have in place, aggressively. And if it's street racing, you know, whatever the penalty is for that, we need to double it or triple it to make it so it's so uncomfortable to do these things that people will stop doing it. As far as traffic goes, boy, a lot of people coming into Colorado all the time, all the time, all the time, so we're just going to have to worry out how to deal with that.
Time. Bruce?
Traffic issues are like washing your dishes. We'll always have them. As I remember, the problem used to be cruising around the Westminster Mall. We always have to work on it. We always have to maintain it. The one thing that we shouldn't do, that we are doing, is lowering the number of traffic lanes on streets. They intend to do this on Federal Boulevard. Why would you do that? We've all been on Federal Boulevard at 92nd.
Yep. Time. Thank you. Claire?
Consequences mean we need to support our police department and ensure that they're fully staffed, so they have the ability to do this and to monitor and start policing the way that they should be, and we need to give them the resources and budget to do so. It also means that we may need to implement some more stop signs and speed bumps, like I mentioned earlier, in residential neighborhoods, and it means we have many bike paths that are beautiful. How do we get those connected to our shops and centers so that those that want to use them can?
Thank you, Claire. Amber?
I'm very concerned about the street racing. I've lived in a couple different neighborhoods in Westminster over the years, and there hasn't been a neighborhood that I've lived in that I haven't heard it, listened to the street racing. I'm concerned about people driving home, coming home late at night while people are racing. I'm concerned about potential accidents. And so we absolutely need to make sure that our police officers have what they need so they can be out patrolling and taking care of that.
Thank you, Amber. Christine?
I do support our police officers, and I know their job is difficult. But I think that consequences, just like homelessness, we have to have consequences. If people don't keep, if they break the laws, there should be consequences.
Thank you, Christine. Jeff?
Oh, this is a little area I have experience with. So street racing is a big problem. The downside a lot of people don't understand is the cops not going to be on every corner until you do something wrong, of course. But we need to support the officers. There's a great police department you have here. We also need to support them by making laws that can be appropriate to go with the crime or the traffic violation. We have a lot more traffic. We have a lot more people that have moved here. You're going to have bad drivers.
Ran out of time. Thank you, Jeff. Karen?
Well, I, we do have a lot of traffic as a consequence of more people, and so it's breeding its own set of problems. But I really would like to see more public transportation available, and I'm not talking about buses to downtown or light rail to downtown. I'm talking about shuttle service within the shops and the recreation areas within Westminster as an alternative to having to use a car all the time.
Thank you. Karen? Paul?
So there's definitely increased traffic, which makes it more dangerous for the street racing. I drive a big box truck frequently, and I can see all the marks on the streets. I can see the donuts. I know it's happening. I can occasionally hear it, but I don't actually see it, but I know it's out there. So there has to be a time of day when it's occurring, and perhaps we can get the police force to patrol more during those times when they're actually doing the racing to make it safer for everybody else.
Thanks, Paul. Tim?
There's been a recent change to state law that allows us to use speed cameras on our major arterials. Cameras don't sleep. Cameras, it would be expensive, but when they're on a corner, they're there all the time. And I think we could use that very effectively to reduce street racing. As for other traffic safety concerns, I think we can talk about how we can change some neighborhood street designs in order to curb speeding in neighborhoods.
Thank you. Next question. Six of you are running on slates, and four of you are running as individuals. All of you have plans, yet those of you whom the people elect have three continuing members on council who the people also elected and may not agree with your agenda. How are you going to work with the people on council? Scott, start with you.
Well, the, our objective initially, if there's slate of us do get on the board, okay, it would be three, and there'd be four existing members. Our objective really is to meld in and hopefully pull a couple of those people across to start thinking the same way as we think. Let's look at these, at these spend, make sure it's right. Let's look at the, well, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Bruce?
Well, I thought I was on a slate two years ago. I thought when I got elected, there were five like-minded people on city council. And I think we got swindled, and we just need to reach out to our friends and wake them up.
Thank you, Claire.
I would disagree with the word slate, but I am, I do share values with two other of the members of this candidate council here. And I am here to collaborate with other members on council, and I am here to get things done, and I'm here to use my experience and resources to find common ground and to build bridges, which will be more successful and make for a better, safer, more successful community for us all.
Thank you. Amber?
Yes, there is a rumor that there are two slates. There are one slate. There's one slate. So as a legislative aide, I have worked on bipartisan bills, which means I worked with people on both sides of the aisle. I've had to work with senators and legislative aides on both sides, and so this is something that I have experience with. Whoever that I'm on council with, I'll work with them so that way we can reach the best decisions together collaboratively.
Thank you, Christine.
I have to agree with Bruce. I helped some of these people get elected. They did not listen or do what they said they were going to do. That's why I'm here. I'm here to join Bruce and Scott Schilling to make a difference on city council. I think three voices are better than one, and so we hope that three voices will be heard better than one and that we won't be censored, just like one of us was. Three of us will not be censored.
Thank you, Jeff?
Well, I would hope that I would be voted in as an individual. I'm also a voter, and I do not want to vote for a slate. Do they all think alike? Are they all going to vote the same on every issue? We have to be open-minded. We have to look at every issue individually and then vote on that prospect from there. I would hope the voters are voting for me, because I am an individual. I am open-minded, and I will listen to their concerns and then vote on specific issues, issue by issue, not as a group.
Time. Karen?
Yeah, I'm considered an independent thinker. The reality is, I'm a registered Democrat, but I have been a little bit dismayed at seeing some of the general decisions made by the Democratic Party as a whole. And so I have chosen not to associate myself so much with the Democratic Party, but I do have some of those core beliefs of a Democratic person, and I hope to work on council with those beliefs.
Time. Paul?
So perception is everything. There is the perception that there are two distinct slates. There's a left side and a right side being perceived by the voters. I'm a registered independent. I'm middle of the road. I was raised as a Republican. I'm disgusted by the polarization that's happening on both sides right now. I can do my best work for city council. As an independent, being able to reach across the aisle and work with people on either side.
Thank you, Paul. Tim?
I think it starts with the values that you agree on. That's how you start a discussion with someone that you are having a disagreement with, try to figure out where do we agree and where do we go from here.
Thank you, Rich.
Westminster has roundly dismissed and not elected slates in the past, because Westminster does not like group think. How you approach that and how you approach it on council is dealing with each individual issue separately and building coalitions. If you want a group to talk the same and call people liars and swindlers and corrupt, then you have to make that decision.
Thank you. Scott? Oh, you answered it. Oh, I forgot to read my notes. Second bite at the apple, my friend. All right. Next question. This will start with Bruce. So as an elected official, it's likely you're not going to get your way some of the time. How do you continue moving forward with a council after the council makes a decision that does not go your way?
Well, I've done that a lot. What my disappointment is, is that, and it's apparent to anyone who watches our meetings, is that when we get to council, it's like it's a done deal. The decision's already been made. There isn't any real discussion that takes place in the open, and I'm very disappointed with that and would love to find a way around it.
Thank you, Claire.
We need to rebuild the trust on this council, and I think that can only be done by electing people who are willing to collaborate and talk to each other, and we need to make good use of our time with each other in our strategic meetings to ensure that we are aligning on our values and committing to the constituents of the city and also committing to each other to work together to get things done. We can rebuild trust if we elect the right people.
Thank you. Amber?
Yes, so in the legislature, sometimes bills, they don't get passed, and when it's a policy that I've worked on, it can be very disappointing. But it doesn't mean that that issue necessarily goes away. Sometimes it means looking at it, finding where it went wrong and where we might be able to make it better. And so I think it means working collaboratively. But while it's disappointing, you have to move forward and see what you can make better.
Thanks. Christine? Yes?
Read the question.
So as an elected official, it's likely you're not going to get your way all the time. How will you continue moving forward after council makes a decision that doesn't go your way?
Well, I was on an HOA, and I was the only woman on the HOA, and so everything didn't always go my way. But you know what? I got those men into shape, because when I got on there, they had like an old man's club, you know? Everyone was getting their yards done for free by the neighbors' HOA fees. Those kind of things is what I want to stop. We are spending the people's money irrationally, and that's why I'm here for a voice for the people, and I'm not going to always get along.
Time. Okay, Jeff?
Wouldn't it be great if government could get along? Wouldn't it be great if we all could come to the middle and agree to things? I don't think you should be sitting up here unless you can get along with people, get along with your fellow counselors. If it doesn't go your way, it doesn't go your way. But it can't be, when it doesn't go your way, then it's no way. We have to be open-minded. We have to talk. We have to logically work through things and come to a decision. That's why there's seven of us. Let's vote. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Karen.
Well, I think disagreement is actually a healthy thing. There's this idea that we should all be team players to make decisions happen, and some of these decisions should not be happening. We should not be just saying, well, we're a team player, and we're going to make it happen just to get along with the team. Some of these decisions are not good decisions, and they need to be rebuked and not agreed with so easily. So this idea that, the idea of city council is to get along, no, it's to make good decisions for the people.
Paul?
This question's flashing me back to my childhood. I never got my way. But I was taught that you don't always get your way. Life goes on. You have siblings, just like you have here. You have people that you're working with to collaborate with. We hear that word a lot tonight, because it's what really needs to happen on the city council, collaborate with other people to make sure you can come to a consensus, and if you don't, move on and don't be angry about it, but get on to your next project and make that work.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, when a decision doesn't go your way, it does not support the residents to then delay the decision that has been made. Instead, you've got to move forward. You've got to find other areas where you can make progress.
Thanks, Tim. Rich?
Life is not fair, and sometimes you don't get your way. Took me 35 years of a 40-year marriage to figure that out, but I finally learned. Now I'm in trouble. This is not a team up here. This is seven individuals, seven individuals that work to take their stand and convince the other individuals that what their thoughts are are going to move our s- the other individuals that what their thoughts are, are going to move our city forward, not their individual agenda.
Thanks. Scott?
I grew up in the corporate world, big corporations. And a lot of times, you would go forward with proposals, other people coming, their proposals. A decision was made and then you went and you supported that decision. Same thing here. Argue my point, I'll listen to your point, argue your point, back and forth, decisions made. And then it's your job to support that decision in the long run. So, that's my approach to this.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, we'll start with Claire. Who is your political role model and why?
That's a good question. You know, I'm just going to give credence to someone sitting right here in this room because she shows up for her residents no matter what. And that would be Commissioner Tracy Krafttharp. Because we are able to reach out to her anytime that we need to. She listens to the needs of the community and she collaborates with everyone on both sides. And that is exactly what we need today, especially here in Westminster. I want to be available to the residents.
Thanks. Amber?
Yeah, that's, I had Claire's entire answer to think about that and I still, I still couldn't think of it. I do think that there are several people that have good qualities that we can look to. One of the things that I've noticed about Tracy is that she's an actual, she's a true public servant. I see her oftentimes getting people plates of food at events and really going out of her way to, when she notices that there's a need that needs to be met, even when it's not political. And so I think, I think that's great.
Great. Thanks. Christine?
I would have to say Ronald Reagan. When I was young, I was so excited when he became president. Sorry. But I admire him because he's a man of integrity and that's what I expect of me to be, a woman of integrity on this city council. I will speak the truth. I will be honest. And that is what I think of Ronald Reagan.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. For me, I'll just keep it local. This is my first time running for city council, so I've had a lot of input. And there's a gentleman up here by the name of Rich Seymour, who has helped me tremendously. If you look at that gentleman, what he's done for this city, look at his website. He's not just a counselor that shows up on Monday night compared to a few others. They do, he does much more for this city. He's done it for years and he's been one of my role models during this campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff? Karen?
Well, I've got to say Bernie Sanders. I really think that guy is looking out for people versus corporations. I admire him and he's a very controversial guy, but he sticks to his guns and he's looking out for people. He's not looking out for pharmaceutical industry or fracking industry or any of those things. And I take great guidance from a person like Bernie Sanders.
Thank you. And reminder of the audience, laughing is a little bit, it's okay, but try to keep the side talk down, please. Paul?
I'm going to give a really strange answer to this. It has to be, for, my role model is a political enthusiast and it's my wife. I have to sit up at night while I'm laying in bed and she has a light on, watching or reading a book every single night about a different president in history. And then I have to hear about it the next day. And it's great because I get such a great perspective on all of the presidents and all the political figures that have been in our lives across time.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, my political role model is a former counselor, John Voles. When I watched city council meetings that he was in, I felt like he was always well-prepared and asked thoughtful questions of city staff and was able to make a decision based on that.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
Any history major, I'm going to go back a little bit further. Sir Winston Churchill almost single-handedly saved the world. He stood up. He understood what was happening in Germany. He knew his enemy. He rallied his people and an amazing legacy for the rest of the world, too.
Thank you, Rich. Scott?
Well, you know, for political heroes, I can go back, all the way back and say, you know, I really admired Thomas Jefferson and George Washington. Coming forward some, I base my approach to policy and approach to life based upon a guy named Ross Perot. When he ran, he was this absolute integrity, 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 and absolute approach things from a financially smart perspective.
Time. Bruce?
Sure, really. Richard Lamb, Dick Lamb, one of the best governors and most courageous people I've ever known, even when he was assassinated by his own party and everything else. Had we listened to Dr. Doom talk about the challenges of old age, we'd be in a much better position today. If we had listened to Governor Lamb about immigration, we'd be in a much better position today. He's my hero.
Thank you. All right. So, one last question here. So, we've, we've had other candidates run for council expressly for the purposes of moving on to higher office. Six years ago, a counselor ran for reelection just to run for Adco Commissioner one year later, a few days later, really. And the current council, somebody who got elected two years ago, has been running for half of this year for a state senate seat. So, will you, if elected, commit to serving your entire four-year term on council? So, start with Amber.
Yes, so this is definitely something that I have thought about and I will commit to serving my four years on council. I do know that we have term limits and so I don't, I haven't spoken to the other council members, so I don't know the reasons why or if they came knowing they were going to do that or if it just had to do with when the seat was open. But for me, I'm committing to stay the four years.
Thank you. Christine?
Well, as you know, I don't aspire for office, so I plan on serving my four years and that is it. I do believe in wards. I think what we need them in our city so people are better represented. I think this, coming into our city and not even knowing who these people are that run for office and they go to higher office is because they all run at large and they have tons of money behind them when they come into our city, which is not our money. It's not from the citizens and I think it needs to stop.
Jeff?
Most definitely. This is my home. I deeply care about this city. I'm in it for just city council. I have no other political aspirations. Many have mentioned they've walked homes. My door hangers went on 15,000 homes. I walked a lot. And one of those things that people brought up was that fact that we seem to have counselors that leave. And the question is, what are they voting on or what are they talking? Are they talking or voting on the next election or are they really here for the city of Westminster?
Thanks. Karen?
Yes, I have every intention of staying on for four years. I would love to help implement some of the ideas that I have for this city and I think it would take the full four years to get that to happen. I would like to see some of the things realized that I think are good ideas of mine and of others. And I would love to spend four years making that happen.
Thanks. Paul?
Another simple question because I can be honest with everybody here and everybody that's going to watch this later. I do have aspirations. My aspirations are to run for reelection for the Westminster City Council after I win.
Thank you, Paul. Tim?
Yes, I intend to serve my full four-year term.
Succinct, I like it. Rich?
Yes, I will fulfill my second term.
Thank you. Scott?
Obviously, just four years. I have no aspirations to go any further than this. I want to make absolutely sure that Westminster is in great shape for when I go to reelect. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Bruce?
Yes.
Even more succinct. Perfect. Great. So, we have, now we're going to have closing statements, 30 seconds.
I didn't get to answer.
Oh, you didn't answer? I thought you started. Did I miss?
I'm okay with it.
No, oh, I'm sorry, Claire. I totally forgot. I'm...
Yes, I am here for my community. The community is in many ways, to me, an extension of my family and that's why I'm here, is to serve.
Thank you, Claire. All right. Now, we have closing statements, your 30-second sales pitch to the citizens of Westminster on why they should elect you to the city council. And also, I would request, modest prerogative, if you would also add the neighborhood in the city in which you live. So, we will start this segment with Christine.
Well, I'm running the city council for you. I'm great with money. I'm tight with money. I find creative ways to make money go further. Even Bruce Baker is amazed by how frugal I can be. And so are my friends. I am creative. I'm a problem solver. I believe Bruce is trying to do the right thing, so I'm joining with him and Scott Schilling and we're going to try to do the right thing for the citizens of this city. And I hope we have your vote on November 7. Thanks.
Time. Great. Jeff?
I live in the neighborhood just east of city hall. Again, I've been here a long time. I've worked here a long time. I deeply care about this city. I know the local issues. I know the economy. I know the demographics. I know the infrastructures. I'm an open-minded person. I'm a pretty humble person, but I'm ready to go back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Karen?
Yeah, my neighborhood is north of this city hall and a little bit west. I am within walking distance of where the proposed water treatment plant is. And it scares me to see a beautiful space like that with owls, prairie dogs, all sorts of wildlife. And I would like to work hard to make sure that water treatment doesn't go through. My website is Karen4Westminster, Karen the number four Westminster.
Thank you. Paul?
We were one of the first arts, first dirt starts and legacy ridge in our part of the neighborhood. We've lived there for 23 years and I love it. If you're looking for a candidate that's got a big D or a big R next to their name that you're polarized and you're going to work that way, I'm not your guy. However, if you're looking for somebody that's in the middle that can collaborate and work with other people to get things done for the city of Westminster and its residents, then please vote for me. And when you get your ballot, just remember, candidate number eight is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Tim?
I will work for you to wisely manage the resources that the city has and so that its future growth is done in a way that supports all the other services we like. And I will use my engineering background to make sure that we are keeping an eye on the effect that things will have on our city and navigate future challenges wisely. If you like what I have to say, please check out my website, timforwesty.com. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Rich?
We live in the Westbrook neighborhood at 100th and Wadsworth. Last four years, I've proven that whether you agree with me or disagree with me, I'll take your phone call. I'll answer your message on Messenger. I'll reply to your text. But what we've done is move our city forward and I've shown that I'll work with everyone to find what's best for our city.
Thank you, Rich. Scott?
I live over on the ranch, not far from here, or actually on the other side over there. Now, as I've been campaigning and wandering around and talking to people, especially down in the southern part and around, I just get a feeling that the city is drifting in a direction that might not be all that good. So, as I tell everybody over and over and over again, you know, doing the same thing over and over and over is the definition of insanity. That comes from a guy named Einstein. So, I'm going to bring new ideas and frugal ideas to the city.
Time. Thank you. Bruce?
We are deciding the future of Westminster. Are we going to be a fair, equal, access suburb or are we going to divide into camps? Reasonable price for water enables every owner or resident in every neighborhood to help contribute their share of beauty to it. When we have this tiered system, that's not going to happen.
Thank you. Claire?
I live on 92nd and Sheridan, within walking distance of here. And I want to say that much of what's been set up here is hearsay and there are a few key candidates that have direct, relevant experience. And I am someone who has direct experience with government as that is my day job. I am here, I have experience with budgets, scope, projects, and I'm here to collaborate and get things done.
Thank you. Amber?
Yes, I think my personal experience, my education and my work on policy will give me a needed perspective on council. I was able to raise my three children here and the city is becoming more unaffordable. I have talked to people, just last week, I talked to someone who has a two-year-old who wanted to raise their child here but can't afford to stay here, so they're leaving. So, I want to work on the affordability issues and I want to make sure that we maintain a place that's a great place for these children.
Time. Great. Thank you. Did I miss anybody? We are out of time for questions, unfortunately. We have four minutes left, so I will be just closing the, so we'll be closing this. So, first, on behalf of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to thank the candidates for attending today and for answering the questions. Also, would like to apologize for any errors I made while moderating. They were inadvertent. And so, I just want to acknowledge that it takes something, to take time from your life and your family and your friends and all of your other responsibilities to campaign for public office. So, I would like you to please give our candidates a round of applause. So, this forum will be available for re-watching from the City of Westminster YouTube page. As far as the Westminster Chamber, please join us next Tuesday, the 24th, at 11:00 a.m. on the Chamber Facebook or YouTube for discussion on Proposition HH. And on Halloween Day, 10:31 virtually for school board candidate forums. And the Chamber website is www.westminsterchamber.biz. Again, thank you all for attending today. The candidates will be available to discuss and they have literature out in the hallway after this. Thank you.